Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, November 2nd, 2015 at 5:00 PM. This is a regular meeting of the Oregon Village Board, which I'd like to call to order. Any requests, roll call, please?
Bollig?
Here.
Coolow?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Bretthauer?
Here.
Udro?
Here.
Staton?
Here.
Tarpinder?
Here.
Thank you. So, Matt's on the way?
Matt's perfectly on time. You know, actually, we want, you want to do the parking spaces.
Yeah, that's what I thought, we'll just go.
And then we don't make them wait.
We're going to do, go over to number, item nine, Communication, Mistling His Business, and do B. Now, we have people in the audience here for that, and B is Discussion Possible Action Regarding Parking Restrictions in Jefferson Street Parking Lot.
So Jeff handed out some overheads, and he was showing a picture of it, Steve has it in his hands there. So, we're not asking for the board, you know, for action tonight on this. We were, the police departments continue to get complaints from the business in the back. Some of the board members may remember when we were dealing with the parking lot in the back. This goes back to when David Donovan was on the board, because we were proposing to think about not having these parking spaces available, and David's recommendation at the time was, well, let's try it, you know, and if we continue to get complaints, well, then we bring it back to the board for discussion. So that's why it's back in front of the board. And I don't know if you had a chance to read Sergeant Elsner's email. The police department's having to go over there because, here's Matt. Police department's having to go over there because the delivery truck drivers are parking every which way and blocking the vehicles coming and going into the back, so. So the board wants to take some action on it. We would ask that you not do it tonight, but that we would think about doing it at the next meeting until I was time to notify the surrounding neighbors.
Okay.
And also, Matt's checking to see if we would have to, if we do something, we have to do it by orders or not.
Okay.
About the parking spaces.
So any discussion tonight from the board?
I have a question, just to kind of catch me up to speed. So when this parcel was developed, for lack of a better word...
Thank you.
Where was the public right of way for that business? Or how was that built into this development?
The village, the public used to actually, used to drive on private property to get around a pole back there. And so they used to actually come through and drive into the, into their parking area. They used to drive straight in into their parking lot, Jeff.
How?
Off of Jefferson Street.
So, so was this parking lot that's currently marked off in the middle, was that always a parking lot? Or was that public right of way?
This, people used to drive, people used to drive through here and drive around, so that, so the RX used to build it, just drive into their business until we put parking in the way.
Got it.
Yeah. That's kind of a simple way of explaining it. But we're trying to maximize the parking in the back.
Have we thought of any other options besides eliminating parking spaces?
We have, well, that's what, that's what's, it's in front of the board tonight, because we've gone through this numerous times. The biggest issue is, delivery trucks, as you can see in Dave's photographs, they park like this, and so when you're trying to get in, you're trying to get out, you, a car can move and maneuver around it, but if somebody has a car and a toll truck, you're not going to do that.
So this is the only option? We've considered other options, and this is the only thing that's left? Or we haven't considered other options, and this is the first thought?
There's only a couple of things you can do. And you can either give them a straight shot into the, into their property, or you just continue to allow it the way it is. And there's really...
There are really no other access.
Yeah.
We walked around there with the landowner and some other individuals the other day. There really aren't. You're kind of locked in back there.
I mean, there's, I know Eric had mentioned to me before the meeting, and this came up in the past too, well, police should be, you know, a truck driver is parked in the wrong spot, you know, we start ticketing the truck drivers. The problem is sometimes there isn't an officer around to respond, or it takes time. And, you know, the question is, you want the department continuing to go up there for these complaints. Typically, when the officer responds, they talk to the driver, the driver doesn't even realize it's not supposed to be parking. They just, you know, delivery truck drivers, they want to get their stuff off their truck and get on with their day, and, so.
Is that, is there signage that makes it clear to truck drivers that, that there is no tandem parking or whatnot behind those establishments? I haven't been back there.
They're, they're parking in the drive-through lane. I mean, isn't it, I think it's striped along the building, I believe.
It is. It's striped along the building, and there is a no parking sign on that pole that's right off between the building and that string of cars. It's probably shown on your photograph page there.
Oh, the striping there?
No, the no parking sign too.
And what did the businesses say about, about that? Have they been approached?
So, so we, we just, we got this complaint, we walked over there, talked to the RX guy last week, and I wanted to put it on the board agenda for discussion by the board. If the board wants to think about making a change, or even consider it, then, as I mentioned, I would, we would send out a invitation to the next board meeting to invite the neighbors to the meeting. There's no way you will make everybody happy with this, Jeff. Whoever's been through this, no matter what you do, someone's not going to be happy with you, so.
As I recall, we debated this at great length when we redid this parking lot.
And the dumpsters.
What Mike is indicating is absolutely true. No matter what scenario you choose, someone was unhappy.
Yep.
I'd be happy to hear any, any solutions that we have not already heard or tried.
There's only two things to do.
Yeah.
I mean, there's only two ways to get back there.
Right.
My question was, could we stripe that wider? So they would realize that's their loading zone area, and they would leave the drive-through open more? And secondly, if I remember correctly, when we talked about removing those parking spots before, we made a comment to the RX Auto person, if we got rid of one stall, would he get rid of one stall of his? And he said, no, he would not do that. We would have to lose two spots in the village lot. He wouldn't make any consideration on his property for his customers to get back there, if I remember right.
That, I remember that, but it's probably true, yeah.
I remember that. I was thinking about that right now.
When I, you know, another thought that comes to my mind is, if we did eliminate those two parking spaces, that would have trucks, potentially towed vehicles or larger trucks turning basically against parked vehicles, potentially creating an opportunity for an accident.
You mean, you mean down here, Jeff?
If you, those, the area that you've indicated with yellow brackets and a no parking sign?
Yep.
If we did eliminate those two areas and created, basically created a right of way through there to get into RX, right? Potentially, a truck coming through there and making a left-hand turn towards Main Street could clip a parked car.
Oh, going the other way? Talking about going the other way?
Either way. I mean, if we made that into a right of way, you, I think you'd have the, we'd have to think about how we would protect that first car from being clipped one way or the other. And in the end, um...
You're driving in a parking lot? I mean, you're driving in a parking lot? I mean, you're just...
Well, that's part of it, yeah. And then the other part that crosses my mind is, if we've got, if we have an area that's signed no parking, to me, if it's an enforcement issue, that's something altogether different than if, than if the question is whether we properly signed it.
So there are a couple of questions. First off, the officer will go up there, they'll talk to the delivery truck driver, and they'll say, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't notice it. So now you, the point is, you want your police officers, this is what they're doing, is going up and having to deal with a parking issue in, in a parking lot. I mean, that's, that's the other, that's the flip side of this. I mean, so it's, it's one thing to say, yep, you can put better signage up, and we're going to start enforcing it, but is that what you want your police department to be doing during the day? And then what, what happens, as Steve mentioned, I mean, there is an officer available to do that.
My guess is that there aren't very many truck drivers that deliver there, and it wouldn't take too many tickets to get the message through. Or take the sign down. I mean, if we're not going to enforce no parking, then, then why put the sign up? And if we're going to put the sign up, then why don't we enforce it?
Do they have a hard time turning around, though? The trucks, really?
They back.
They back in.
Oh, they're back in.
Yeah, they back in along there.
I like Eric's idea of, of trying to expand the striping if possible, and just making that a designated loading zone, and if you're not in the loading zone, you're not in the loading zone.
But that would, that could, that'll force them over more towards that power pole, telephone pole over there, and that'll actually probably create more of a problem. I think the idea, when they don't have a problem, is when they're actually parked in that hatched area. You know, some, some of them, I'm sure, if they do it right, they try to get as far over as possible, so that they're not in the way. But if we increase that hatch area and force them farther away from the building, I don't know if they'll really abide by it anyways.
So does a truck fit in the hatched area?
It, it would.
Almost?
Its, its right wheels would be over into the hatch area, but it won't, it won't be all within that.
You can see on one picture that, no, a truck won't fit.
It's about as width of a car there, the hatched area.
All right.
But I think when they're parked pretty close to the building, you can get through. It's when they're parked, you know...
When they're, when they're dual, side by side.
I'm not saying every truck driver does it, but I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult with this, but I'm just saying, you know, this, again, our police department is busy, and, and we have been going up there, I, I know, this has been going on for a while now, these complaints. And I agree, you can write tickets and...
I think the better resolution is to solve the issue...
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
Having us to go up and ticket everyone. I mean, we can certainly do that when we're available, but we should really try and solve the problem.
Well, if people are parked in a no parking zone, and if the zone was identified as a no parking zone for a reason, then the problem is, is the enforcement of the no parking zone, isn't it? Isn't that the problem?
Well, we can certainly enforce it. Is that going to solve the problem? I, I don't, that's not necessarily going to solve the problem. I mean, like, like Mike said, delivery drivers just want to get their stuff delivered.
If I could, I mean, it sounds like the root of the problem is that delivery drivers can't get back there. They're trying to get back here.
The toll truck guys are...
Yeah. And, and as long as they need to get back there, they're going to try and, they're going to do whatever they need to do. So, you can say, don't park here, but if there's no other way back there, I mean, that's the... Well, how would we solve the problem, then, if you had two trucks parked side by side, and the cars parked in illegal spots can't back up? They're going to call the police and say, you got two spots over here for RX, but now I can't back out because there's a truck right behind me. So now what are you going to do?
Right, that's why we have to, I mean...
So then that whole area would be no parking, or else we'd get rid of all those spots that back up to that area, too.
In my opinion, you got to solve the egress issue into the, into the businesses.
So it's like, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know.
You know, and having been a delivery driver at one point in time in my life, the issue between the delivery drivers is they don't want to wait. They want to, they want to squeeze in any way they can squeeze in, drop their load and hit the road, because they got stops to make.
Absolutely.
And the only way that you can disincent them from that is, is by making it painful. I mean, I don't think there's any way that we can reconfigure this back parking lot, that delivery drivers aren't going to try to, to get in wherever they can get in to drop a load if somebody's where they want to be. You got, you got to get through to the delivery drivers that there's only one appropriate way for you to drop your load, and if there's somebody there, then you're going to have to wait, or you're going to have to come back later.
Jerry?
Yes, I'd like to hear what the feels have to say since they came down here.
Okay, yeah. I thought you wanted to talk first. Yeah. Yeah. Because it's coming back, now keep this somewhat short here. We need to move on.
Yeah, deja vu, yeah. Appreciate Mike, I know what you're saying, we're not going to make everybody happy.
No, we know that from history.
Oh, yeah, I, I understand.
Past history.
I understand that.
But saying that there, you know, you said you went over there and you walked around, but what about the entrance that comes off of Jefferson Street, right before the bridge? There's access in, in there?
And right now, it's filled with...
I mean, it's, right, it's filled with garbage right now, but there's a driveway.
Still with recreational concepts, vehicles.
And it's the same property owner for there.
If they were to eliminate all the garbage, and I don't know how many of you have been back there, it's atrocious. It's talked about blighted, and I took Steve back there. It was bad then, it's worse now.
But there's a drive there.
If they would clean up that mess, they'd have plenty of parking for recreational concepts vehicles back where all the garbage is, and it would open up that drive. I've seen in the past where trucks, recreational concepts trucks, they're dump trucks, and they haul skid loaders on their trailers come through that area. But now, they've accumulated so much junk back there, there's no other parking, so they're parking in that driveway. And, you know, that property, that whole section is owned by one individual, and there, as far as I can see, there is no obligation for the village to provide a entrance to anybody's personal property.
Well, there's already one there. That's what we're saying.
There is one there, and if the delivery trucks have to wait to unload, my God, you know, where is it written that a toll truck driver can't wait a few minutes before he pulls them? I see every once in a while, and I go through that lot maybe three, four times a day to monitor things. I've never really seen a toll truck driver have to wait. There's always a clear run for them, and they come all the way in, and on public property in order to get onto private property. There is a entrance for that property, and if it's plugged up, that's for the landowner to take care of. It's not for the village, it's not for the police, it's not for anybody else. You know, we've had gained one parking spot since 1978 back there, and now we're going to think about taking away three.
Who owns that other drive?
Lynch and Associates. That's, that whole property is Lynch and Associates. He can open that up and have his tenants clean up the mess and have some regulations there for his tenants. We do it all the time, you know, where you can park, where you can't park, et cetera. You know, the village has no obligation, the police department has no obligation. It's up to the landowner. If it was such a big problem, then a garage could be tore down on the, what we used to call the hillbilly house, and then they could have a straight shot into that area. We tried a couple of years ago, and I was threatened when I walked out the door by individuals telling me, I better, you know, watch what I say and what I do. But, you know, I think, you know, collectively, you know, he has to, you know, do what he has to do for his tenants, I do what I have to do for my tenants. Parking is at such a premium. We opened, when we bought 135 Phil Arms Building, we took, first thing we did was take down all the no parking signs. And by the way, there was a sign there also that said, no parking by orders of Oregon Police Department. I don't know how the police department got into monitoring private property, but that was, you know...
We don't need to go back to that.
Yes, but anyway, I think the, the point is...
We don't need to go back and open old wounds.
Right, that's fine.
There's a lot of...
No, but there's a lot of good, there's a lot of good there happening right now, because that's happened. You know, that's very positive, and I just wish that there'd be the more positive focus on working, the village working with private investors who, you know, are trying to make this downtown thrive, you know? When Friday night was wonderful downtown. I don't know if anybody else was driving around, but in that lot alone, you know, that we opened up, there were nineteen cars in there, and it was great. And they went all the way down South Main Street, over on Elm Street. You know, you can't be taking away now. That's the point.
Yeah.
And the village needs to start kicking in and, you know, working, like Bonnie said, with investors for parking. We do have a parking issue downtown, and there are many areas where parking can exist.
And your statement isn't totally accurate. We have invested a fair amount of parking downtown, and we have invested a lot of money in downtown over the years since 2008.
We're not saying you haven't. I'm just saying that...
I thought that's what I heard Jerry say, that...
No, no, I don't think so.
Okay, so, just a couple more minutes, we're going to move on to the next item, because this is going to come back to us, we don't want to go through everything all over again, so.
And just to, I remember when Jerry said that comment about the driveway on the side, I do remember, and I believe it was the recreational concepts people that told us, we were, last time we had this discussion, they were having a hard time getting their vehicles in here some way, and they said that they would start using that driveway if they need to be. So I know it was brought to our attention that they could win it out that way. Maybe we need to have a conversation with the landowner.
Well, by the end of next meeting, we can go through the whole thing again.
There you go.
Okay, so we will close this item out tonight, it'll come back, notify more appropriations.
Yeah, but do let all the other businesses know, too. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of input.
That's why we're waiting.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back to the front page, item three, Village Attorney's Report. Welcome, Matt, good to see you. Item three, Discussion Possible Action, Supplemental Agreement for Land Division, Improvements in the Plaid of Third Edition and Maryhill Edition. This is sharing your approval cost, Don Thompson, driving.
So at your last meeting, you approved an arrangement between the village and Jim Lees and Mary Jo Lees relating to some additional work that needs to be done that wasn't known when the original plans were reviewed for this project. So we prepared a supplemental agreement that addresses this additional work, requires that it be done, and the village commits to paying $10,000 to the developers as a contribution to the cost of completing this work. The village's payment would not be due until thirty days after the additional work has been completed and accepted by the village, and all outstanding fees and costs owed to the village have been paid. That's about it.
So it basically formalizes what we agreed to at the last...
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so we need a motion, please?
I'll make that.
Second. Thank you. So as Doug just said, we talked about this at our last meeting, and this puts into writing what we talked about, to finalize that and get signatures. Is there any further discussion or questions?
Steve?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment that Jim had spoken to me earlier today, and he wanted to let, have me let the board know that, that they were very pleased with everything, and they'd want to thank, personally thank the board for contributing the $10,000 towards this.
Okay, great, good, thanks. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, most curious?
I just want to make a comment, and the last one, I, I said no, because I wanted to add the extra $2,000 to it, and that's the reason I had said that I didn't agree with it. But at this time, I'll agree with it.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to item B, Discussion Possible Action, we got ordinance number 15-04, and ordinance to create section 1.30E, amend sections 131, 1A and C, create section 134, 1E, and amend section 1.353 relating to student appointments to certain boards and commissions. This will be the first reading, second reading, and adoption of the ordinance, so. Matt?
I was asked to draft an ordinance that provides for adding a student member to certain boards and commissions. The arrangements are a little different, depending on the entity we're talking about, so let me just walk through them. So for the planning commission, this change would authorize the village president to annually appoint one student enrolled at Oregon High School, subject to confirmation by the village board for a term of one year. In this case, the student appointee would serve as a non-voting member, and if there was a closed session, would not participate in closed session, and would not be counted in determining whether a quorum is present or not. So they would be a member, but a non-voting member. For the park board, this change would authorize the appointment of one, excuse me, I need a second here. Okay, so we'd have one student who's enrolled at Oregon High School would be appointed by the village president, so we'd go from a seven-member park board to an eight-member park board, one of those members being a student. And in the case of the park board, my instructions were, as I understood it, that they would be a full member with the right to vote and participate and be counted for quorum purposes as any other member.
And they currently are, we have them right now. So what we're doing here, we're adding, we're just adding the additional alternate?
Well, you're, no, no, actually, your current ordinance says seven. I boosted it up to eight, one of whom being a student. Okay? So then you'd have on your park board, one member appointed by the Chamber of Commerce, or at least nominated by the Chamber of Commerce, one nominated by the J.C.'s, one by the Oregon School District, and then, in addition to those three, the village president appointing three citizen members and one student. Now that gets me to seven. I had to check my math here. Chamber, J.C., School District.
He was a Rotarian.
The village president just put one...
The village board gets a member.
Oh, village board gets one member.
Yes, right.
So that's, there we go. Now we're up to eight. In addition to this student member, this change would also provide for appointing an alternate student member who would serve in the absence of the regular student member. So that's the park board. With respect to the library board, this is more like the planning commission. It authorized the appointment of one student enrolled at Oregon High School, appointed by the village president, subject to village board confirmation for a one-year term, again, serving as a non-voting member.
But can I just ask you really quick, as we're going through this, is it possible for us to pause to just ask questions?
Sure.
So with regards to C, to C, I understand that the spirit of that last sentence is, is that the non-student member who is a voting member, being absent, would be replaced by the alternate for purpose of voting? But the way it reads, when a non-student member or the student member is absent or does not vote, to me, seems to imply that the student member has a vote.
They do, on the park board.
To make this really simple, we're, the board's appointing a student member to the planning commission, historic preservation and library. Those three, Jeff, are not counted towards quorum, they don't go into closed session, and they don't vote. Only on the park board is a student member vote, but does not, but does not go into closed session, and the park board never go into closed session. That, that's what we're really doing.
And the park board has had a voting student for a long time.
Yep.
The only change is adds an alternate, and I'll make just a couple of comments here, Matt, that I wasn't at the meeting where the board approved going ahead with this, but we had four students that submitted applications to be on the library board, which I was sure that's not going to happen, we could have had one, which meant three who wanted to couldn't be. So it seemed to me that we should have students involved as much as possible, and apparently the board approved, felt the same way when I was gone, which led to this ordinance being developed, so that's where this all came from. You know, there could be years we don't have that many students interested, but I would hope that there would be, but this does allow us to have students be present, go through the learning experience, be involved, and I think feel affirmed by being a part of what happens in the village, by being on these, these different boards and commissions and so on.
And I could, I could see why we wouldn't want the students to be voting members, because there's a learning curve there, and, and because the decisions that are being made are binding on the village and on the village residents. Help me understand why we would want the student to be a voting member of the park board?
They have been.
Well, but help me understand why we would want, I mean, since we're going to go through and make these amendments anyway? This is my first reading of this. Why is that something that we would want?
Well, the, the park board, I need to be careful I say this.
Mr. Bollig must have made a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I think the, the reason I remember is because there are, have been users, if they resided in the village...
they've resided in the village any amount of time, they've been frequent users of parks probably, and they would have some legitimate input as to the management and care and the direction we wanna go in the parks.
Versus creating a, there was some talk way back when when this was done, Jerry, about creating a youth committee, and we, I think we thought it made more sense to actually put them on an active board that was making decisions regarding the parks.
I don't know the history on the, on the park board, but like Jerry said, kids use the parks growing up, it's something they have interest in for younger brothers and sisters, whatever, and I think they have an investment there, whereas on the planning commission, library board, HBC, I mean, that's, they've had no experience in those things at all. They get the experiences, they're involved, but I think it'd be hard to give them full voting rights to start with. Now, depending on how this plays out, if kids get involved and we fill these places and people are maybe involved more than one year, I mean, we looked at in the future of making some voting rights there, but I think we need to go through it personally, a trial time to see how this plays out with the other boards and commissions. And this year may be unique, it may be the only year we have more than one person apply for anything.
Well, so as point of order, I think, I would like to have a bigger conversation about this particular section for two reasons, well, three. The first I already, I already articulated, I question whether or not a student has the maturity and the responsibility, they don't have skin in the game, they're not taxpayers, to have a vote on a board that could, that could ultimately affect where tax dollars are spent or not spent.
The park board makes recommendations to the village board, so they don't, the park board does not have a final say.
Right.
Yeah.
That could ultimately affect where tax dollars are spent, so not, not in that particular meeting, but...
Yeah.
As it progresses up.
Yeah.
I personally, as a board member, tend to, tend to put a lot of weight on the committee's recommendations because I feel that that's the area where issues are hashed out. They don't need to be hashed out here if they've been hashed out there, so, so to me, it means a lot, what a committee recommends to the board. The second reason is that three citizen members and one student are appointed by the village president. That's almost a quorum, well, that is, that's almost a quorum on an eight-person board, which, which puts a lot of sway, power in the hands of the village president over what gets recommended by the park board up to the board itself. And I'm not saying that that's right or that's wrong, but that's pretty unique relative to the way that we've worked in the government to this point, anyway. And my third reason is, is by having eight voting members, you run the risk of deadlock on committee because you can't get to a, you can't get to a simple majority.
But the alternate doesn't vote.
Well, the three citizen members, the one student...
I think, I think this, I think this section needs to be, yeah, I think, so when the park board, let me back up a little bit, so the park board initially was seven, seven members, so then, so then the park board added an alternate, and so only, only when the, another member is, is not there, so you, you, only seven members get to vote.
In, in section A, we have eight voting members.
We do have eight here, Mike.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this, that's not right.
But I mean, it, so are you saying we need to change this so that instead of having, you know, one from the commerce, Chamber of Commerce, one from the J.C.'s, one from the School District, one appointed by the village board, three citizen members and one student?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the eight.
Well, I would also point out that I don't, do we still have J.C.'s?
Because right now, I...
I think they disbanded.
It's the rotarians.
So I would say, this is also, we also, right now, there's an Oregon Rotary...
Maybe we need to change from J.C.'s to something else. I was just tracking your existing...
I was just saying, if you're gonna change the paragraph, you might as well make it completely factual.
I agree with that. Do you have a hint?
So right now...
Well, that's what this is, that's what this discussion is for, though, I would, I would think.
Yeah.
But Doug just said that the J.C.'s are returning now.
Oh, they are.
No, no, they're defunct.
Oh, yeah.
So...
So it's not...
I didn't think they'd be having J.C.'s, which is too bad.
Because you're saying we did have eight before?
No, I mean, we do because you've got seven and you've got an alternate.
The alternate is not...
Okay, so, so my thought, Jeff, on having eight, there's a possibility for deadlock, I personally don't worry about that. I mean, if somebody's gone here, we have a possibility for deadlock too. That's true of, you know, any, any of our boards that have uneven numbers, which I think they all do except the library board, if somebody's gone, there's still a chance for a deadlock. So I personally don't worry about that. Having a high school student on the park board, I think, I think they have the maturity and the wisdom to, to take part in discussions and make good decisions. I don't think they're, in my mind, they're not gonna swing things in a way that we're not gonna like, and, and if the park board does that with the student vote, who still comes here, and we decide, so, I mean, that's the check and balance to me. I worked with middle school students for years after I made the high school, and we had times, different ways set up for kids to have input, and in some cases, a great help. In other cases, the topic before us was such that it was, was too complex for them to really make a wise decision, so we tried to use them ways that fit with where they were developmentally worked up rate.
So as a voting member, not to belabor the issue, because I really appreciate, this is a point, counterpoint, and there's not a right answer here, but as a voting member, I either have to vote or I have to abstain. So that's a great example of one of my concerns, which is that a student might not have the maturity or the experience to vote, which means either they're gonna have to vote no because they can't vote yes, or they're gonna have to abstain because they don't have enough knowledge to be able to make a good, informed decision, yes. And to me, there's just a lot in there. I do agree with you that I think a student's perspective is very important, especially when you're making decisions about where the village is going. They're far closer to the trends that are turning economies and businesses, et cetera, than we are. It's, my only question is whether or not they have the maturity and the ability to make good, informed votes.
Yeah, and I know Mr. Pliner, the high school principal, feels all these kids have the maturity to make good, informed votes, and I don't think the high school would recommend they let us know they feel that was the case for the student, would be my guess. Another quick example, I get it goes back, I was at the middle school, we went to site-based decision-making, we had three major committees that had a huge impact on what happened to the building, we had parent members on those, and I remember one night with the budget meetings, our final budget meeting, to finalize the budget that went back to district board, and all the parents were present, and only one teacher and myself, so the parents, in effect, could have controlled that budget meeting and made recommendations out of that committee on what, by controlling, but they had no interest in doing that. Their interest is what's best for the building. I think kids will be, what's best for the buildings and park board too, be higher than usual if they weren't. And again, if, if somebody applies to, there were concerns, which is highly apparent, I think.
Could I make an observation?
You certainly can.
I've been on the park boards the last year and a half, and our student representatives tended to be not fully engaged, and I think it would be helpful, not as part of the ordinance, but just as a recommendation, that student representatives to the board ought to be mentored by somebody so that they can be brought to speed up on issues. They'd be much more effective if they came into the meetings better prepared. That's been a problem, I think, with high school kids because they are busy in their student lives, so...
I think that's a great point, I think the same thing, we get these kids involved, how do we bring them up to speed before they even start meeting, then keep them up to speed as they go through the meetings?
Mm-hmm.
And that should be part of the learning process.
Yeah.
If we can formally build that into what we do. Good, thanks, Doug. Other thoughts?
I've got one question. You've got the park board member, the student member, that's mature enough to vote, why is that park board member not mature enough to go into closed session? Because he's gonna have to go into closed session and vote on items that might pertain discussion in closed session.
I think what Mike said was, park board never goes into closed session.
I can't, since I've been here, they never...
Just never happens.
Yeah. Not sure what they're...
If that should not be in there, because if they by some chance have to, I don't know.
The library board may go into closed session because they have personnel issues, but planning commission, probably hardly ever, if, if ever. Park board, I can't imagine it.
And historic preservation, no, it's, well, the library board would do it for personnel reasons. That's a good point you're making, I mean, if they ever had to do it, I suppose, how would they vote if they're not in closed session? True.
To your point, I did not say in here that they couldn't go into closed session. It does not say in, under, for the park board that they're precluded from going to closed session. So if they ever had to go into closed session, they could, for the park board.
I must have, I thought I read that somewhere, but maybe not, okay.
For the three other bodies, that's true.
Okay.
Yeah. It's hard to track them.
Yeah.
So... I kinda jumped in there.
Well, I just wanna make sure, I heard that there was some discussion about the Oregon J.C.'s maybe no longer being the right body to mention here.
Yeah, it should probably be changed to Oregon Rotary, because I believe the Rotary Club has a representative on the park board, and has forever.
He's designated as such.
Do we still have the Chamber of Commerce and the School District each appointing one? And, and the way the ordinance is drafted, it doesn't say they appoint, it says they provide a list of proposed members to the village president, village president gets a pick from that list, I suppose if they give you a list with only one name on it...
It's all it's ever been.
Then that's...
Yeah.
Okay, so we can make that change to say Rotary Club. I've heard a lot of discussion, were you planning on adopting this tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you wanna vote on it, it would be voting on it with that one change?
Yeah.
I move to approve.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Well, the, the motion pertains to all of the amendments.
Well, the only amendment I've heard so far for sure that I wrote down was the change it from J.C.'s to Rotary Club. If there are other amendments that you think ought to be made, I don't have those written down yet.
Well, the action is to approve or, or deny ordinance number 15-04...
Yeah.
Which encompasses this plus, we didn't quite get to the student appointments to the third board, right? Or did we?
Well, we haven't, I didn't talk about it, but it's been discussed.
I interrupted you midway through your, your walking through the changes because I wanted to get more clarification on that one section.
Sure.
So I'm all right with the motion being made and seconded, but I'd like to let you finish before, before calling a vote if it's all right, Tom, Steve.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then I wanna go back and clarify the motion. So I, I, I don't remember if I talked about the library board, but yes, we would have one, under this ordinance, one student appointed by the village president, subject to board confirmation for a term of one year, again, in, in the context of the library board, serving as a non-voting member, without the ability to participate in closed session and not counted for quorum purposes. And then finally, the historic preservation commission. Again, one student for a term of one year, non-voting member, non-closed session, not counted for determining whether a quorum is present. So that's kind of the end of that. And I think the motion that the village president wanted to make was to adopt the ordinance with one change, and that is from J.C.'s to Rotary Club, where it meant, where it says J.C.'s change at the Rotary Club. So as I understand it, that's the motion that's been made.
Yeah, so it is 15-04 with that one change of the club, would be the only thing, so...
I just have a question though, like, like the library board, okay, why don't you have whoever is in charge of the library, do you have something to say about it too, to choose that student? Maybe that's been a student that has been helping at the library? I mean, should they have their input in it too?
They certainly could, if they chose to do so.
Yeah.
You know, librarian, what you do would be to contact me and let me know that that was happening, or the village board rep there could let me know too, that, you know, this student, they've been at the library, I'd like to see them, you know, even encourage him to volunteer to do it. Sure, that wouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay.
That'd be even better. Jerry?
No, you answer my question.
Okay.
So I wanna vote yes on this motion because I agree with 95% of it, but I do wanna go on record as saying I don't agree that the student should be a voting member of the park board.
Okay, good, we get that on record then.
Do we need to make any kind of thing in the motion that's gonna waive the first reading, or this is the first reading, waive the second reading, and adopt tonight kind of thing?
Yeah, if, if in fact you have a rule that requires...
I think Jerry's, I think that's what Jerry said.
Is that what you meant?
That's what I said, yeah.
It's on the agenda, and I wanted to...
I'm just kidding, yeah.
No, that's a good clarification, and that's what Mr. Pliner wants to say.
That's what my motion was.
Okay.
You just didn't hear it.
I guess I missed that part when I seconded it.
So, so let me, let me make sure we've got this right. So the motion is to waive the first reading and the sec, and the second reading, to suspend the rules and authorize voting on the ordinance, and to adopt the ordinance with that one change.
Yeah.
So it's, that's all in that motion.
Yeah.
We probably need a supermajority vote to waive the rules, but it sounds like you're gonna have plenty.
What's a supermajority, just from my own knowledge?
It's usually described as, I'd have to look in your code to see what, how it's described for you guys, it's usually either two-thirds or three-fourths.
I think it's five. This got really complex, didn't it?
There's a lot in that motion.
There is. You're suspending your rules and adopting the ordinance. Because if you didn't suspend the rules, you'd have to have a first reading tonight and come back to your next meeting.
I thought this was gonna be the easy thing.
Yeah, I know, you too.
Mike said I'd be home by now.
Yeah.
We've done, is it waive the first reading, or, no, first reading, waive the second, adopt, we've done that before, no suspension of rules.
Many times, many times, yeah. But, but we usually, sometimes we don't, if, sometimes we just introduce the ordinance, then let it sit there for two weeks and then bring it back, but I know you wanna appoint this, this student to the park board for Wednesday night, so...
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I have extra hours of sleep.
Okay, so, item C, discussion possible action, student appointments, we have one night Julie Maurer for the library board, the park board. There are two other students, I talked to Mr. Pliner last Tuesday, and communicated a couple more times, I've not heard back from him, one of the other students on where they'd like to be so we cannot appoint them, and I was hoping to have all to appoint, there were originally four applicants, one withdrew because he's too busy, and it turned out to be in the planning commission, a great spot, but, so there'll be two more coming to us with our next meeting, so...
So just for my knowledge, the way that I understood the ordinance to read was that you make the appointments...
With village board approval.
Subject to confirmation.
Yeah, yeah.
So the village board...
So you make a recommendation effectively to the board, not, you don't appoint people to the committees?
Right, yeah, it's gotta come to the board for the approval. So we would need a motion second to approve Julie Maurer to the park board.
So moved.
Second.
And I have just a quick question about that, so what are we evaluating? When, when you bring this recommendation to the board, what's the purpose of us making a motion to approve your recommendation? I don't have anything in front of me to assess or evaluate, or...
It's right here.
Oh, I thought this was a template.
It's a little form that all our applicants for any, not just students, but all applicants fill out.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically their application is what we evaluate and ask questions?
Yeah.
If we have any?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I would try to sort things out before it comes here, if there was need to make a, I mean, I would hope I wouldn't be appointing somebody that wouldn't be doing a good job.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion second to approve Julie Maurer, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you. And item D, discussion possible action, Stafford Rosenbaum rates for 2016.
So moved.
How much did this go down for 16? Big decrease.
On the lighter side.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any discussion?
Just wanted to wake everybody up after that last discussion.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
We'll now go to item fifteen, our closed session. While Matt's here, and then he will be able to leave.
Actually, we don't need Matt for this.
We don't?
We don't, I mean, let's go.
Okay. So we'll go back to the front page again.
Well, Steve, I'm going to ask, I still would like to go into closed session. We could now, but we don't need, we don't need to have Matt come in the closed session.
Okay.
We're sending him home.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
Make his family happy. Thanks, Matt. So item fifteen, the village board will adjourn in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee with which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may discuss compensation modifications for police department supervisors.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Grenier?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Staden?
Yes.
Hudrow?
Yes.
Poole?
He stepped down.
Yes.
Okay. So we're going next door.
Yes, please.
So we will go next door. Good evening, everyone. We are back in open session for an item five, approval of minutes. Item A, and I will read this as. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Four was public appearances. There's none listed there.
That's why you skipped over it.
Well, usually I try not to. So five is minutes. So item A, I will make the motion, village board acknowledges the following minutes prepared by the village clerk's office are the official minutes of said meetings. We need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. And that's November eighth, two thousand thirteen, December sixteen, two thousand thirteen. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the amount of seven hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty cents for approval.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Questions?
I have a couple. Item twelve twenty-five, the Burke truck. Are we installing backup cameras for the first time in those vehicles or are those replacements?
You know, I just saw that today as well. I'm going to have to get back to you on that.
That's fine. That's fine. I just didn't know we had them on those vehicles.
I didn't either, and I saw the invoice this morning, and I was like, I'm going to have to ask Gary about that and see what's going on.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying I didn't realize we had that. Maybe it's a new program.
I'll go on record as saying it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then on sixty-five seventy, Painton Dolan gravel for Lincoln Road. Is that the combined town of Oregon and village project where we're doing the shoulders?
It's not really combined. It's part of our agreement with the Bergmont development that we would maintain Lincoln Road out to Fish Hatchery through.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six. And so, yeah, we agreed, did this last year, agreed to do some shoulder dressing. And we, I think we actually borrowed the town's equipment to do the shoulder dressing. It's a attachment that goes on the back of the dump truck that helps push the, you know, the road base material right to the shoulder, and we just go along and grade it compactly.
So has someone done the inspection with someone from the town yet?
Um.
Because I think that's what the agreement.
The Pacer inspection, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've done, we did the inspection. I drove, actually, I drove both and, and, you know, but we haven't done that with someone from town.
Yeah, I believe that's what the agreement indicates, and if you don't do it with them, Jeff, they're going to whine about it. And I shouldn't say that. They don't whine.
Strike that. They're going to comment on it.
Yes.
Can you erase that?
Jerry's in trouble.
See that cord in the paper now?
Yeah.
Oh, my. No, the town has raised it as.
Can I leave now?
We'll do that, Jerry.
No, they won't be happy.
No.
If we don't at least get their input on that.
Yeah.
Has that been done, Jeff?
It has not with them.
No, but I mean, has the gravel been done?
The gravel's, yeah, the shouldering's been done.
Okay.
Yeah, and I did look at that. And we've also, we're also, we also addressed a culvert that's heating out right out in front of the nursery out there. I've evaluated it. I had, it was Wayne Ace look at it as well.
That's right.
And we both agree that it's, it's an old, old culvert that really doesn't need to be there, so it's going to be removed or has been removed by now.
Well, I'm done.
After questions on the vouchers? Okay, seeing none, we have vouchers for approval in the amount of seven hundred fifty-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty cents. Roll call, please.
Staden?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Bretthauer?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Hudrow?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion is approved. Item seven, community input. Anyone in the audience wish to address the board? Yes, we do have one. Welcome, Judy.
Thank you. We're getting ready for the holidays, so I just wanted to remind everybody that November fourteenth is the, at eight o'clock, we're going to start putting lights up downtown. So we invite you all to come and help us out. And then at one o'clock on the fourteenth, the horse parade will take place. December fourth, Santa will be coming to town. We're going to have the lighting of the tree over at BMO Harris Bank, and then we'll have Santa at their location with cookies and hot chocolate and things like that. So mark your calendars. December fourth is that date at six thirty. The other thing is December tenth, the chamber is having a member meeting, and we are inviting all businesses to come to that meeting to discuss the final reading of the sign ordinance.
What date did you send, Judy?
December tenth.
That's correct.
At eleven thirty.
Yep.
At the state bank of Cross Plains lower level on the back. So we invite you to come to that, too.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, disproclamation and announcements. Item A, board comments. Anyone tonight?
I just had a comment about our meeting on Thursday. The time has been changed, so I'm speaking at an event and won't be able to be here until about six thirty. So I just wanted to make sure I'm not going to screw up quorum.
And I won't be here at all. I've got a conflict with an event up in Sun Prairie.
I, you know, it's funny, I moved it because I was afraid that we added a couple of things of the planning commission before we'd get to the sign ordinance. I thought, you know, we'd be getting the board, the joint meeting, like at seven fifteen, I was worried the board would be upset, but just not wanting to come that late. So I tried, that's why I moved it up, so.
I won't be here either. I'll be at another meeting.
I won't be here until after the EMS fair meeting. There'll probably be six thirty.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've got a couple of things on the agenda, so.
And that meeting meets at five, so I should be over here by six thirty.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
But doesn't, isn't the village board noticed to start at six?
I'm guessing.
Oh, you just guessed, okay.
I even hesitate almost putting that time on there because we've got, we've got at least, well, they're going to, they're going to review the, conceptually, the middle school and the high school plan, so I have no idea how long it's going to take. And so that's why I got worried that all of a sudden the joint meeting with the board wouldn't even start till seven thirty, and it'll last me pretty late, because just to think, the sign ordinance could go over an hour, maybe an hour and a half, depending on how long, how much time we spend. Well, let me, let me ask you a question. Since, since, the goal was to have the board there because we're trying to be a little efficient, because this is when Mike Slavney was going to give his presentation, and it'd be good to have the full board there, well, at least everyone, as many people as we can, to ask Mike questions so we don't have to bring Mike to another meeting in front of the board. So do you, would you prefer that we move it to a different date?
I would. Talking about presentation we got into the central campus?
Sign ordinance.
Sign ordinance?
The sign ordinance, yeah. Because this, this is.
Jeff is pre-involved.
And is very involved, and I think it's very important to have.
Yeah. So we're trying not to pay Mike twice to do the same presentation, which is why we wanted to have the joint meeting. So we could still have the planning commission meeting, and we could hold off and do, and do the sign ordinance some other night. But then I'd like to plan a day that, a night that, that the board, you know, will be there.
Yeah, and that's all we do with the planning commission. Is that a possibility or not?
Well, we could try that. The problem is trying, you know, like Jeff made a good comment a couple of weeks ago. Every Monday, he thinks he's going to be here on your calendar. So you start trying now to coordinate fifteen people's schedules on it just to pick a, we're going to, we're going to, that's why you either try to have it on a Monday night.
Yeah.
Or on that first Thursday, because otherwise someone's going to miss.
Is the planning commission meeting televised?
Uh, no.
Because I would think it would be important to televise the sign ordinance just so the community knows if they want to, what's going on also.
Be up to Dan if.
But I mean, so if, if they don't televise the planning commission, maybe Mike should be at a board meeting when that's televised, so everybody knows about it, or everybody knows what's going on. They can't make a planning commission meeting to look at it. I don't know, I'm just commenting.
Yeah.
Well, the other benefit to that is that everything that's recorded by Oregon Cable Access is saved. So if somebody wanted to watch the video presentation, they could do it at a later date.
So, but, so the goal is just that we don't want to pay Mike twice?
Well, I mean, I mean, I think the board, to make Mike do the presentation twice, plus I think it'd be good to hear the planning commission's interaction, reaction to it. You haven't even really seen this. It's a pretty involved process. They've been working on this since the summer.
Yeah, I'm on the planning commission, so that's, that was another reason why I was frustrated that the time got moved, because it's always on my calendar at six thirty.
Yeah.
So I.
Well, again, seriously, I really thought by the time we get to, it'd be seven thirty, we'd be here at nine o'clock that night, and I, so, well, let's, let's pick a different day then. We're having so many conflicts. Well, so what about?
Do you think the next planning commission?
Well, that's what I'm saying. What about, what about December third? I mean, the problem is, is that if we, there's always going to be stuff on the planning commission agenda. So if you want me to start the meeting at six thirty, that means, you know, we probably won't get to the sign ordinance till seven thirty or seven fifteen. So is that okay if the board is coming in later that, on a night like that?
Why couldn't that be the first thing?
Well, typically, we, typically you have public appearances.
I know.
I mean, I mean, I mean, honestly, it would make people wait an hour and a half to, you know, on the public appearances. A little, a little rude. Well, I don't know.
And we couldn't have a joint planning commission and village board on a Monday night?
We, we could do that.
The ninth is.
We could do that, you know, sometime. But I don't think we're going to do it on the sixteenth of November, because that's the public hearing. We've got some other. But we could, well, what Jeff and I could do is ask the planning commission on Thursday if the December seventh board meeting would work for them. How about that?
Is that a Monday night?
Monday night.
That'd be a lot better.
Okay.
For me.
But most likely, we'll probably lose some planning commission members. I mean, it's possible. That, that's the trouble when you try to do.
Yeah, we lose the other group, John.
But maybe, and maybe not. So do you want to try, we'll try that instead. So we forget about Thursday night. We'll, the planning commission will start early and we'll be done early, so.
Okay.
And we'll shoot, we'll try to ask for December seventh. How about that?
Just planning commission at five.
So December seventh, if we would have a board meeting?
Yep.
It'd be a joint board meeting with the planning commission. And if there aren't public appearances on that night, we would do the sign ordinance if there is, but to make somebody sit and wait for an hour and a half is. So, okay, we'll shoot for the seventh. And if that doesn't work, we'll, we'll figure something out. So if you could save those, those packets you have? Good. Thanks. Okay.
Any other board comments? That does take care of B one.
It does.
So B two is November eighteenth. Village Hall will be closed from nine thirty a.m. to four thirty p.m. for cleaning and filing day. Getting caught up, right?
I'll let Lisa Peggy talk about it.
Well, we're going to try and make a dent in it anyway. There's a lot of storage, little spots all over this building, so we'll do the best we can in those hours.
Okay, good. Any questions on that, anyone? Okay, we will go on to item nine, communication and miscellaneous business. Item A, continuing the overview of the two thousand sixteen budget and questions or issues from board members.
So in the packet is the updated levy sheet, which now has the final assessed value. And also, we did receive our expenditure restraint limit, which is one point six. And right now, the general fund operating budget is approximately one point five eight. So as we note on here, this, if the budget gets adopted as is, it will qualify for expenditure restraint payment in twenty seventeen.
Okay, great. So did you get that restraint number after we did the budget?
Great. We just got it on the twenty-ninth of October.
So that's just a happy coincidence then, that it's one point five eight.
Well, we, I mean, we.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we sort of knew where it was going to be.
Okay.
We knew it was going to be.
It was going to be tight. Actually, Lisa made a really good comment that, so that the state sets aside a pot of money for this. And as more may remember, maybe two or three years ago, we didn't qualify. We decided to lift the general fund expenditures. We didn't qualify. So with this tight of an adjustment, we could be qualifying for, with fewer communities, which means we could get a, we could get a nice payment in twenty seventeen possibly.
Good.
Unless they change the program.
That's why I bring it up. That's, that's very good news. Actually, that's a, I think the budget we just finished is a very good budget. I really do. And when you combine that with the fact that we were able to continue all our programs.
Mm-hmm.
And do some great improvements, with only a two point nine-three percent increase is, is wonderful, I think. People get a good Christmas present. Or not, depending on.
So, so we, you know, we'll have some things to talk about at the public hearing. There's been, you know, there's a few things we had to tweak in the budget since the board adopted the plenary budget, but the big one was finally getting our assessed value from the state.
And your Christmas present will be thirty-five dollars and thirty-one cents cheaper than it was last year.
Yeah, it will.
Anything else on the budget? Okay, seeing none. Item B, we have done. That will be coming back to us. Item C, follow-up item, questions regarding squad number one, twelve damage.
So Jerry, that, I don't even remember. Jerry, that, that was an officer that got into an accident at a QuickTrip parking lot. I did verify.
That's fine. It wasn't.
I know you weren't. I had to look it up and.
Curious, you know, whenever you see an accident, you'd like to know if there was any, an injury or.
No.
Or anything like that.
I read, I read a description, and you can see how it happened in the, in the parking lot, so.
And then the other thing is, was insurance filed for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, item D, police department, September and October two thousand fifteen investigation activity report.
Because we didn't have a committee meeting in October, I thought the board should see this tonight, so this is what Brian provides.
I think it's good for us to see this and to know they're doing a whole lot more than running radar and keeping track, I think, so.
Absolutely.
Pretty complex, difficult things.
It's good to know what kind of situations occur in the village.
A lot more than what, what is in the observers.
Absolutely. And that's, that's why this is such a great report. Thank you.
Well, I hope this helps. I know the board appreciates what our officers do, and the chief does, but I hope it helps everyone to appreciate what our officers actually do, that they're, they're good people, doing a good job, and working hard. And there's, as we all know, police have been criticized pretty badly nationwide in some cases. And like any occupation, there are lots and lots and lots of really good officers, and we're lucky to have the ones in Oregon that we do. So we appreciate what they do.
Thank you.
Item E, discussion, possible action, intergovernmental agreement for operation of an impaired driving task force, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
We did, we did this for last year.
Yeah. We've done these before.
So I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. This is where a number of communities cooperate with officers together to focus on impaired driving. Are there any questions?
I assume the cost for this is budgeted?
This is, this is provided by a grant, so.
Oh, it's a grant. Even better.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item F, discussion, possible action, two thousand fifteen shop with a cop program.
So I'll make this motion. This is just to continue the program for two thousand and fifteen, right?
I'll second it.
So the reason why this is in front of the board, this remind the board, is that in the employee handbook, an officer cannot do anything off duty in uniform. And so that's why this has to come in front of the board. So what Brian are going to bring forward to the November twenty-third personnel meeting is to look at, maybe tweak in that a little bit, that maybe, you know, Brian and I could sign off on this versus having to bring this to the board every year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And there's, and there's a couple of other, other things that've come up that, um, the officer wanted to do some charity work in uniform, or, I mean, for a charity, and they technically couldn't because of the handbook, so.
Yeah, no, that'd be a good idea. There's no reason for the board to have to take action on something like that.
So, we'll bring it to the committee.
Just that, you know, I, the only thing I would ask is, uh, when you take an action like that, just report it to the board.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Anything else on this item? We have a motion second to approve the two thousand fifteen shop with a cop program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item G, Dane County Pass and North Main Street area by Alpine Liquors. There was a noticeable bump there from a, a patch. I know Mr. Bollig worked on this for a while, but, uh, Jeff had the magic touch, and based on what Jerry laid the groundwork, got it done, so.
I said please. I think that was...
Is that what you have to do, Jeff?
Actually, and I, I thank Pam and Greg for, yeah, for doing that.
And I also, I'd, uh, it, uh, not only that they did it, that they did it so quickly after Jeff asked and inquired about it.
Jerry, Jerry, do you know, does Josh know about this? That he did, do you know how quickly they, they did it for us?
You know, I, I, I'll pass it on Thursday.
I was gonna send him an email and...
Send an email.
Let him do that.
Yeah.
Josh is, uh, Joe Parisi's chief of staff.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, kinda, this is, kinda adds the list of things the county has done to really help enhance our community, so.
Right.
We appreciate that.
Pam will get some credit for it, too.
Yeah, she should. Yep.
We'll go on to item H, leaf collection period lasts until November twenty-fifth, weather permitting. Uh, there's a progress report map on the village's webpage, so.
Yeah, um, a couple, a couple of things that were a little new this year is, in following your request to some public works, uh, staff, and I thought this was a good idea, they were asking for a public notice to be put in the newspaper that would just kind of outline the instructions, the time period. Um, it really helps when the residents kind of make that extra effort to pile it up nicely, not put it in the curb and, and everything like that. Um, and so, we went ahead and, um, had this run for four weeks. Um, and then, uh, we're also, uh, trying to update maps of where they, what they did the day previous, so you can click on there and kind of see where they were. The only thing I found is there is some confusion with some of the residents on, they're feeling like they maybe missed or missed their spot, and we're gonna keep going through the village as weather permits. Um, and so I'm actually gonna have Joy to take care of a little bit of the confusing language on, on the website, but otherwise, I think it's been going really, really well.
And see, I'm gonna do what you always ask over here, is ask people, please do not blow or rake your leaves into the gutter. I saw a few people doing that over the weekend, and it's, it's bad for the, for the water quality, and that's why we ask you not to do that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, item I, discussion of possible action regarding Otis Elevator Company, five-year agreement. Uh, first year's two thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
Same price as last year.
But if you, if you wanna put a motion and a second, I wanna say something else.
So, move.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, I'll let Jeff talk about, but, uh, we actually went back to the company, and there's some tweaks to the agreement that we thought we should go through, and then we can answer Doug's question, too.
Yeah. Basically, I, we, we have a service contract with them, and that is, they come out and they do our inspections. They've provided us some recommendations for improvements over time. They check the phone and all that type of stuff, but there's, and we've, we've brought to you before during the budget discussion, some items that we'll be addressing in twenty sixteen that are included as part of the, the budget. One of those is, uh, upgrade the phone to a ADA, um, accessible and ADA-proof phone. Um, this, uh, there is a certain report or, uh, inspection that is done every year, and they're going to include that as, without any added cost for this next year. Um, like you said, it's tw- twenty-two hundred and twenty dollars annually. Um, I did have some issues with, under the terms of the contract, under page five of eight, if you go under that, um, I did not like the idea of an automatic, um, uh, renewal at five years, and, uh, there's, there's quite a bit of language in there, so what I'm recommending is, um, the, that sent, that paragraph at the bottom would say the term of this contract, unless modified, will be for five years, beginning on the commencement date, period, and then striking all the rest of that, which was that additional renewal and a hundred and twenty days and all that type of, uh, stuff. Under price adjustment on page six, at the end of the third paragraph, I would strike, recommend striking that sentence that says, "If the new owner or successor fails to assume your obligations under the contract and you agree to pay Otis all sums due for the unexpired term," I would recommend striking that line. And I've actually talked to this, talked to the, uh, rep about this, and told them this would be my recommendation tonight. I would add text there that says, "If the building is torn down or unattended, the terms of this contract will cease." Really, what I, what I explained to her is, we really don't know, and, and I know, Jeff, you've talked about this before, um, we don't know our future as far as what we're doing with our campus planning and everything like that, and so we wanna be able to keep our options open. I think five years is very reasonable. Um, like they, like I discussed with her, any kind of new structure building, we would be adding, undoubtedly would have elevators plural, and I'm sure Otis would at that time be wanting to have our, our service as well under that new facility, so, um, they were very amiable to allowing these changes to the contract. I think it gives us a, a pretty good deal for service with them.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
So, questions, comments? Anyone? Okay, we have a motion second to approve the agreement with the Otis Elevator Company, the five-year agreement. First year's two thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And that's with the amendments that Jeff recommended, right? Because I'm in favor of all of those amendments, and I, and I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of the motion without those amendments.
We'll, we'll show in the motion that it was with the amendments.
Thank you.
Okay, J, a letter from Department of Transportation, update to the six-year highway improvement program and impact on Highway fourteen project. Just moved back to two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, so it moved out a year, but I, I don't even know if that's actually a, a good year. I, this is FYI, and...
Yeah.
I know you've been reading about what, what's going on with the highway budget and everything, so we'll see what happens.
Item K, Mr. Grace has asked me to hold that for another meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Item L, you sent our information?
That's just FYI.
This is information that we're getting from, uh, the director.
And I do appreciate those updates from them, so please thank them.
I pulled it, I can...
Would it be useful information to start collecting addresses of the attendees?
A- a- addresses?
Yeah, uh, just to see where the students are from. In other words, if they're from Madison, or Pittsburgh, or Brooklyn, or Evansville, or whatever, right now, um...
I could ask them.
Well, similar to...
I think they, I think they...
I think they do that. They have to ask.
I think they know that, Jerry. They, they know where the kids are coming from, but I, I can verify that.
It'd be interesting, because if we were getting a situation where we're looking for more funding...
Mm-hmm.
We could at least ask. I'm not saying we demand, but we'd at least ask.
Didn't the last report, they did that? Did they say how many from every place?
Yeah, we've, we've had that before in the reports.
Well, I guess if you check with them and they already are collecting that information...
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Okay. Yeah. I'll verify that. I know they were.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I know if, in their search for funds, sometimes you go back to the municipality where the students originate from, and they can, they're, they become...
I think that's why they do that, Jerry.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'll verify that.
All right.
Okay, item M, discussion of possible action regarding declaring old water meters and computers as surplus?
Who to prove?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from staff here?
Just little stuff. Whole list, whole list of meters. Man.
Okay, any, any questions here? So, we have the motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item N, follow-up to the downtown signals timing issue?
Yeah, um, Darlene asked, was asking about this, and, uh, appreciate you bringing that to our attention. That's very, very helpful. Uh, we went down, we walked through, and I, we completely agree, actually, some of the signal times were seemingly very short.
Yeah.
And we also noticed that the countdown timers, um, it'll go, it'll go white for walking, and then, and then usually somewhere around the midpoint, it will go to a warning, but it should have a countdown. And the countdown, I think, three out of the four countdowns were actually not working.
Correct, yeah.
So, I contacted, uh, Dane County, or, uh, City Madison, excuse me, and, was it Dane County?
It, it's actually City Madison.
It is. I said Dane County in my email. That's wrong.
That's okay.
But, uh, City Madison, and they came down, took care of it. I actually walked around all four of them today and, uh, did not get hit. And all of them, all of them were operating. I thought the times seemed reasonable and not, if you make them too long, um, then you start getting impatient drivers, and people start to jump the gun a little bit, so.
Great.
But it seems to be working real well.
Okay, thank you. Item M, the Beltline Study Update?
Just FYI.
Okay, thank you. Item P, discussion of possible action for fire, EMS district's purchase of ambulance?
I'm gonna make that motion for discussion.
Second.
Thank you.
So, I, I asked Phil Van Kempen just for a little, um, background, and he said that, uh, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong on this, please. Um, it's approximately two-hundred thousand dollars. The final price will depend upon the options we, we chose or choose, which have been, not been nailed down yet. Uh, the district will put down ten percent, approximately twenty percent, uh, sorry, put down ten percent, twenty thousand dollars, uh, from the fund balance, and we sort of talked about this at the meeting last week. And then the commission, probably at Thursday night, will be talking about the, uh, uh, financing options. Um, I think, you know, one of the things that, this is good timing, because the counted-done loan is, 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 um, is ending next year, so whatever we, whatever we, if we take a loan off for this, we don't make this payment until twenty seventeen, so we just continue the same type of loan.
Yeah.
So, there will be a loan that won't be taken out of fund balance, or we don't know that for a fact yet?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
The money exists in fund balance, that's an option, um, but we, but we won't know